If I can have your attention, the last pounding of the gavel was not that my customary gavel check. It's time to commence the meeting. I guess the only one we're missing is Julie.
The only thing I can think is Julie maybe a few minutes late or she forgot we're starting at six instead of 6:30. But she did tell me she was planning on being here.
Okay. Would you care to introduce our speaker, Mr. Day?
Sure, I'll go ahead. For everyone who might have had a chance to meet.
This is Jesse Day. He's the director of Planning for Piedmont Tribe Regional Council. He's my boss for a little while until I decided I wanted to come back up here, la, la, la. But Jesse is extremely experienced in the field of planning, especially in North Carolina. He's been director there for quite a few years now. Is it six? Yeah, for six years now. And like we had mentioned recently, we've got several new members on the board. We thought it'd be a good idea to have a workshop to just kind of go over all general things, planning, zoning, Board of Adjustment, et cetera. So we're in very good hands when Jesse presents. Do you want to do invocation or go ahead and have Jesse present?
No, we'll start the other meeting at seven.
Okay, that's fine.
Hold there, Jesse, we're ready. Okay. Well, good evening. Thanks, Lynn. It's good to be here. And I'm at your disposal for the next hour, so I'm really excited about it. Let me pull up my presentation here. I've left a copy, I think, at everybody's place. There's additional copies here if anybody wants to grab additional copies that did not get a copy. But I think all the board members have those, like Lynn said. My name is Jesse Day. I'm the planning director for the Piedmont Tribe Regional Council. We're a 12-county region with 75 member governments. About 42 of those member governments are small towns under 10,000. So that's what we end up doing a lot of work with is with our rural members as well as our larger cities. But in our planning department, we have about 12 staff working on transportation, land use and zoning, which we'll be talking about tonight, and then watershed planning as well. You also have an agenda of kind of the topics I'll cover. I'd love to hear some feedback at the end if, one, if we didn't get to any of those items on the agenda that you feel like you needed information on, context for, et cetera. So do let me know how we do in terms of hitting on all those points tonight. And then we'll also have an opportunity to kind of just walk through some discussion items as well as some case examples, just to kind of pick apart some of the decisions you guys get socked with every month, just to kind of walk through the challenges of balancing out, you know, the comprehensive plan and then that individual, you know, property rights balance that we have to do on a monthly basis as we make these decisions and make recommendations to the board. Let's see, so the agenda, let's see, how do I advance here? Okay. Here's the agenda. It's also, you've got a printout of that. So these are, these are the points I want to highlight. Before we get started, we'll talk a little bit about why you're on the planning board. I just, real quick question, as I was doing research for this, I've done, I did a training up here in 2020. Who was on the board in 2020? Cory and James? Dylan? Okay. Well, I promise it'll be just as exciting as it was in 2020, okay? Maybe more, so.
Just a picture.
So we'll go over kind of the nuts and bolts, right? So when you're sitting as a planning board, how do you run the meeting? When you're sitting as the Board of Adjustment, some of the differences, the nuances, not a lot of difference in terms of process, but there's a fair bit to go over. So we'll hit on those two main points and then walk through those frequently asked questions and then wrap up and provide some critiques. So any questions before, before we get started? Okay. Who wants to start with why they're on the planning board, just to kind of get, get things going? Give me, help, give me some context for, for my presentation tonight?
I'll start.
Okay, thanks, Jeff.
I jumped on the board to help represent my area that I live in. It's one of the fastest growing areas in the county. And I thought, you know, it's a representation from there and wanted to help and be a part of the community.
That's Bethany area or?
Bethany area, that's correct.
Yeah, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Who wants to go next, Cindy?
I came on the planning board to try to make a change or make a commitment to the community to make decisions that affect them every day, affect what's around them, what's right on top of them, what can make their neighborhoods good, what can make them, you know, not so good, and try to make decisions looking through the lens of the citizen and also follow the rules and the, all of the training for the planning board.
Yeah, well, there are a lot of them, right?
There are.
Good, thanks, Cindy. Paul?
I'm actually here by accident. I originally applied for a position with the county settled housing disputes. I can't remember the name of the committee, escapes me. It's like a housing board of adjustment. And the reason I did that is that for the 10 years previous, I had lived in Greensboro and served as chairman of the Housing Committee of the Human Relations Commission and was one of the stakeholders that worked on the landlord-tenant alternative dispute resolution process that was done in a combined effort between the Housing Committee and UNCG.
Okay.
But then I was informed that that committee had been more or less rolled into the planning board and the director at that time suggested I just get on the planning board. So that's how I ended up here.
Okay, that's a real roundabout way. Okay, thanks, Paul. Cory?
I've always kind of felt, you know, if, you know, we can't really influence state or even, you know, or country politics or what's going on, but we can at the community level. And so there's, when I looked at across all of the committees that are in the county, the planning board seemed to feel the best fit and it was an opportunity for me to, to help influence or do, do my part as a good citizen to help the county. And this is, so that's a, that focus at the, at this level allows us then to have some impact if necessary.
So you've been on the board the longest, Cory, or your James has?
No, I believe Paul has.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, great, good, thanks, Cory. James?
Echo with what everybody else has said, more along the lines of what Cindy said, just be involved as much as you could in your individual communities and just be able to, you know, go out, take a look at the, at the things that come up. And oftentimes, before I got on the planning board, I always wondered why something happened the way it did. So my interest before that was piqued and now I know. But a lot of times, we get to see a lot of the same information the commissioners do. So we're able to recommend, you know, from what we see and the questions that we're able to ask through the applicants or actually going out to a site and taking a look and developing our own questions there as well. So a lot of times, we're able to recommend to them what we see and feel or hear in our community where they may not be.
Yeah, yeah, great, thanks. Dylan?
Well, I think I came onto the planning board the same time Cory did. I think we went to Citizens Academy together. And after that happened, I think it was the leader of that or the director of that that just kind of said, what committee do you want to join after, after that happened? And I chose planning board, not knowing really what a planning board was or what it did. But I like it a lot and it fulfills my call to serve in some capacity and, yeah, it's fun, I enjoy it.
Good. Do they still do this as Citizens Academy here? Starting back up next. Okay, I guess, yeah, well, COVID, yeah, yeah, such an important, important role, I think, for, you know, just maybe explaining how, you know, your point, Cory, about how much influence you can have on local goings on, you know, I think we tend to focus on state and national politics, but a lot goes on at the local level that we can have some part of that democracy on. So, great, thanks for sharing that, I appreciate that. All right, so, well, let's jump into the thick of it here. So I'm going to start off kind of with the, kind of the basis for, for these decisions, right? So why, why are you tasked with this job of being planning board members and the Board of Adjustment and how is that, what are the broad guidelines for that? So, and, so we are not a home rule state. There's some states, I grew up in Maine, which is a home rule state where each local jurisdiction gets to kind of write the rules as they see fit with some real broad context. In North Carolina, we're enabled by the General Assembly for, for local zoning. And so the chapter for that is 160D is the enabling statutes. We're just going to read through this tonight, how about that? It's real work for, I'm just kidding. But, so a couple of years ago, they combined the county and the municipal zoning statutes into one chapter, which I think simplifies things for the landowners, the folks that come up and talk with you, the developers that come and talk with you on a monthly basis for their ideas, what to do with their land. So, so that's helpful. But two chapters developed because municipalities established zoning before counties. So you had kind of two different chapters for, you know, decades. So that was, that was a good move a couple of years ago. What does that broadly, what does that enabling legislation do? It enables you to do zoning, but you have to keep a current land use plan in order to enforce zoning. Thankfully, there's no prescribed, like, well, you've hit year five, zoning goes away because you didn't update your land use plan. It's, the terminology in the enabling legislation is reasonably updated. So I think, I'm trying to think when the date was. You've got a pretty new one, so you're in good shape there. I think it's 2020, maybe 2021, when the land use plan was, was passed here. Maybe it's a few years older than that, I forget. 21, yeah, so roughly speaking, the school of government, which is a body that's sort of tasked with interpreting anything the General Assembly does for, for local, local government, said basically, if your past 10 years, you might want to start really thinking about updating for a fast-growing area, maybe five years. So in Rockham County, sort of, you know, certain parts of the county are growing fast, but in general, it's a fairly slow-growing county compared to other, other areas of the state. So anyway, so, so that's the zoning enabling subdivision, so that kind of falls into the zoning category, but a little bit different. So there's pieces of 160D that talk about that. There's also housing standards that are in there, if, if a local government enforces housing standards, that sort of thing. And a reference of building codes. There's, there's a lot in there as well for those enabling legislation and details that we'll talk a little bit about. Especially at the county level here in Rockham County, you have that general police power, right? So health, safety and welfare. So there's, there's broad regulations around that that you guys have to deal with as you consider your decisions, especially when it comes to the quasi judicial, you know, special use permit decisions. We'll talk a little bit about that when we get to the findings of fact. And then, you know, your basic, you know, individual constitutional rights. Joe Schmo comes up in January, you've got to deal with him the same way Jane Doe comes in February. If you are interpreting something for, was it Joe Schmo or John Schmo? Joe Schmo in, in January, you've got to do the same thing for Jane in February, right? That's equal protection and due process, right? So you can't shortcut, circumvent the process and give someone an exception and not someone else and that sort of thing. So that's, those are some of the, the boundaries. If you look at challenges to, you know, decisions made by planning boards and, and communities, it's usually not about, well, it said in there, you know, the density was, you know, 10 units per acre and you let them do 11 units per acre. It's usually around the process side, not following the process piece, whether it's constitutional or, or otherwise. So that's, when you see the cases that are lost by communities, it's when they get outside of the process piece and start kind of, you know, making up their own rules or maybe not really making them up, but forgetting to follow the rules, if that makes sense. Any questions about that before we jump into some of the more detailed stuff? And just please feel free to interrupt as I go if, if a question does come to mind. All right, so what are, what are your roles? Okay, so, you know, you've got in your UDO on page 35 and page 36, you've got the definitions and sort of the duties of, of your role in the UDO, whether you're sitting as a planning board or as the Board of Adjustment. And it mirrors roughly what's in 160D. I've got, I've got the UDO printed here and also the, the 160D. But, you know, generally, you're preparing, reviewing and maintaining, monitoring, periodically updating and recommending to the governing board, which is what? The county commission. Comprehensive plan, other plans deemed, as deemed appropriate, housing standard plan, maybe something around those lines. That could be something the Board of Commissioners say, well, we've got to, you know, upgrade our, our housing standards and maybe establish a board or some, some standards there so they could assign that duty to the planning board. You know, typically, it's done obviously with, in collaboration with staff, but that could be something that you, you get assigned. Facilitate and coordinate citizen engagement and participation in the planning process. Development, recommend policies, ordinances, development regulations, administrative procedures and other means for carrying out plans in a coordinated and efficient manner. Advise the governing board concerning the implementation of plans, including but not limited to review and comment on all zoning text and map amendments. That's probably number four is what, and I'm reading the general statutes right now. That's what you, you know, typically spend a lot of time on in your, in your planning board meetings. And then it talks about some other duties that the, the Board of, the governing board could assign to you. Now, here's, here's an area where, you know, providing a preliminary forum for review of quasi judicial decisions, provided that no part of the forum or recommendation may be used as a basis for the deciding board. Do you all typically do a, like a public, during your regular planning board meeting before a special use permit comes up, do you typically do any sort of pre-review of the public hearing?
Just what's on the agenda.
So you have the hearing and make the decision that night?
And we get a report from staff.
Yep, right, okay. So it's just typically done a one, one-shot deal? But that's good, because I think some communities will do like, hey, let's just, you know, we'll talk about the quasi judicial hearing that'll happen next month on that special use permit. It's good not to do that. So you guys are doing it better than, than some communities around the state. So that's good. So that's the planning board duties, just out of, out of the general statutes. Again, if you want to review your UDO, it's on page 35 and 36, or the, the planning board and the Board of Adjustment, kind of establishment duties, terms, that sort of thing. And I guess there's a text amendment around the terms tonight as well. But, you know, your powers and duties will probably stay the same over this a little bit. Try to step back a little bit from that. Okay, any questions around that? And then on the screen, we've got, you know, that kind of summarized in, in a graphic. So let me set this aside for a second. Now, what are the types of decisions? So let's talk a little bit about the different kind of scale of decisions that you have to make. You know, you've got some administrative decision, really what that is, there's not really interpretation needed. Okay, it's a minor subdivision, it's a major subdivision, it follows the rules, great, all right, send it through. If it doesn't follow the rules, tell the applicant to change how they're laying out their lots or whatever that, that might be. Site plan, same, same deal. Very straightforward, not much room for interpretation. Now, there may be enabling items in your subdivision ordinance that allows like up to a certain variance that could be staff approved or board approved. That's where, you know, you would, you would follow those. I'm not super familiar with the subdivision ordinance, but that could be some interpretation as it relates to subdivisions, if, if you have that in your ordinance.
If I may, a good part of that is handled by our technical review committee.
Right.
Especially site plans.
Yeah, and so your ordinance can, can assign that to staff and basically the staff can sign off on it. You don't have to spend your time dealing with it. Yeah, if it's very straightforward. And that usually speeds things up. Applicants and residents are, you know, are usually happier for some of those minor things not to have to go in front of the Board of County Commissioners or the planning board to get, get approval for, for what's pretty straightforward. But some communities will put a lot of that onus on the planning board. Now, in the yellow box, we've got the legislative decisions, again, pretty straightforward, but that's where you've got to match up the comprehensive plan with that specific, you know, site proposal. If especially, well, text amendment is a little different, but if it's a map amendment, it's a, it's a legislative rezoning, but you've got to kind of bring those two pieces together and consider both, right? Okay, it's consistent with the land use plan or it's inconsistent with the land use plan. I've heard, you know, you know, these concerns at the public hearing around health, safety, you know, those sorts of things. How do you, how do you merge those two together? But it's all, all prescribed, staff gives a recommendation on that, on that rezoning. And so that's where you can talk to the applicant before the public meeting, you can have some discourse, that sort of thing, just to learn more, do your own research, that sort of, that sort of thing for a rezoning. So those, and the other thing I want to point out, as I'm, as I'm talking through, do, do take a peek at this hearing guide. It really walks through kind of four major types of, of hearings. So your legislative hearing on a text amendment, your legislative hearing on a rezoning, map amendment, which would also be a conditional, conditional zoning, and we can talk a little bit about that a little bit later on in my presentation, as well as special use permit hearings when you're sitting as Board of Adjustment and variances. And so that's just a quick guide, you know, months down the road when you've got, you know, a case coming in front of you and you want to make sure, especially for the chair, you'll want to take a peek at that and use that as a handy guide as you, you know, run the meetings and establish the rules. Or go over the rules, not establish rules, but go over the rules with the applicant and, and members of the public that may be speaking during that hearing. In the orange box, we'll talk about quasi judicial decision-making, but that's really captured, you know, when you sit as Board of Adjustment, hearing special use permits and you all are final with special use permits, right? At the Board of Adjustment level and then with variances as well. And then, you know, some of those other types of decisions could be advisory, recommendations on, you know, maybe you want to, as a board, decide to, you know, send a, a letter, we really need to update, you know, the comprehensive plan because Bethany is growing so much and we, you know, that area is not really captured in our latest land development plan and neither of the sections that need to get updated. You could, you know, provide that, that information back to staff on, on those plans or maybe talk about some other issues around housing standards or otherwise and, and provide that feedback through staff. And that may not be a decision, that could be some more of a discussion of the, of the board members.
One, one problem I have encountered with the quasi judicial hearings is the area of evidence. It's not understood by everyone that, that the rules of evidence for civil procedure have to apply.
Right.
And the average person doesn't understand that their testimony is nothing more than opinion testimony, has to be corroborated, which is why we call for an expert witness, either in traffic or housing appraisal, that kind of thing, to corroborate what, what the applicant or objector is, is saying.
Sure. And I'm sure you've had that citizen come up and say, I am an expert in traffic, or, you know, because I live in the neighborhood. And you should, to kind of balance that with like, you know, what are those credentials? Yeah, Cory?
Well, Lynn, you know, this, when, you can't really do that with people who are just showing up and saying, you know, there's too much traffic in front of my house. But do you, do you give that information, when you were doing the quasi, do you give that information to the applicant so that they understand that if they're going to present, they have to present fact?
Yes, anytime someone applies for a special use permit or anything that's going, or a variance or anything like that, we do explain to them all the steps and the procedures and the process that what they're doing is giving testimony. And if they're going to back up any sort of one of their opinions, it needs to be done either with some type of professional experience that they hire out, or it's probably not going to be considered or weighed to the extent of, for consideration.
How far do we push on, you know, the typical person that comes to say, you know, we don't like the traffic?
One thing you want to make sure in a public hearing, I mean, you have to let the citizens speak. Now, as chair, if, if you're hearing the same thing over and over, that's hearsay, well, John doesn't like him, I mean, is it an emotional response? Are they providing any facts at all? You could say, well, that doesn't really apply. And that's really, probably on the chair to enforce, say, well, that doesn't seem to apply here, or John just said what you're saying, thank you, you can sit down now, we've heard that comment. You know, those are some of the things that, that could be said. You're talking about something in Virginia that doesn't apply here, you know, whatever it may be. You know, obviously you do that a respectful way, but say, you know, you're not helping the process because you're not really speaking to this specific case.
And I think that, to recognize Paul, he's done a really good job with that. He's always pointed out ahead of time, you know, when his judicial hearings come up, that what he can allow and can't allow, and he's, I remember two or three different instances where he's put a stop to that sort of thing, where they.
Yeah, I'm just wondering how hard it was.
Yeah, especially when it comes to property values.
A good point about letting, letting the public speak. I mean, you got to, you know, they had that right.
Yeah. Or the other thing to do, and I, I think I've, I've actually seen this in action here, I'm trying to remember, might have been the landfill project from five years ago or six years ago, where basically they had, okay, they had one or two representatives come up and speak on behalf of everybody that was opposed to the, opposed to the special use permit. And, and that's something you could proactively do, is like, I realize there's a lot of you here and just say, if you're going to say the same thing over as, as the person before you, rather have someone that could speak on behalf of everybody.
I often give that warning.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so that's, those are good steps, I think, in terms of controlling that.
The thing is, the evidence has to comply with the rules of evidence. And even things like petitions that are submitted, you know, you got to be real careful how much weight you assign to that. Who's going to verify that, all those people are registered voters, you know? Who's going to verify the addresses? I mean, I can write down 50 names off the top of my head fictitiously if nobody's going to check them. That's why we're not prone to accept petitions. It's things like that.
Thank you. You know, that used to be part of the general statutes, right? You could do a protest petition and you guys had to do like two-thirds majority. So, so some of these kind of thoughts that people have are, used to be part of the process, right? So that's one of the things you say, like, that used to, you know, carry some weight, but right now, you know, we're in a simple majority and, and then, and then go into the evidence and fact finding, or the, you know, findings of fact that you guys have to, have to walk through, so.
And there are some things that can be admitted. For example, a phone directory, just, just to give you an example. It is what it purports to be because it's a phone book. You can see it's a phone book. So there, there are exceptions that you can make for things like that. The key is how much weight do you as a person with a vote on this board or, or the Board of Adjustment, how much weight are you going to assign to that? And that's something I can't tell you because then I'd be influencing your vote and I'm not going to tell you how to vote.
We've seen recent examples of that too, where, you know, we may or may not have all the information that we need to make a, a good decision. So, you know, you do have to vote your conscience, but you also do that with making some background inquiries and doing your own research and, just like you would anything else.
The best advice I can give you is stick to the facts.
And sometimes that's hard to do, your own research when it's a quasi judicial decision, right? Because you, you can't really contact the applicant and talk to them about it because they're, that's, you know, getting evidence outside the hearing. So that's where trying to do more conditional zoning or general rezonings are, are easier. You know, you guys have a lot of uses, right? A special use permit, so you get into that kind of sticky. That's where, you know, having Marzy or Lynn or. That's where, you know, having Marzie, or Lynn, or Victoria, you know, get some of that research ahead of time can be very, very helpful to bring to the hearing, because they're not the decision makers, right? So that's where it's a little bit more on them for those types of decisions and background research, so. Yeah, and this slide just kind of covers, just summarizes that broad range of decisions you guys are tasked with, right? You've got considering a comprehensive plan, you know, public survey across the county, coming up with broad categories for land use on that land use plan, or some general policies around promoting economic development, or promoting, you know, mix of uses, down to those specific, you know, parcel by parcel decisions that you get tasked with. Those are obviously, in purple, much harder when you have to deal with, you know, the neighbors and the applicant who's proposing that land use change. This kind of summarizes, again, just the two major types of rezoning. Again, in your hearing guide, you'll have kind of a cheat sheet on dealing with those two separate types of rezoning, the text amendment, and then the zoning district designation. So just to kind of summarize some of the things to consider and evaluate in that rezoning request, right? It's baked into the general statutes, it's got to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and those planning goals. And oftentimes, staff will provide maybe a reference to those policy sections or page numbers in their staff report. But they'll also do some research on, you know, watershed and some of the basic transportation stuff. You want to, I looked through 160, there's no mention of spot zoning, but generally, what you want to do is prevent that spot zoning. It's not expressly forbidden, but it does create challenges in terms of being consistent with a long range plan sometimes. You know, you want to make sure that advances the public health, safety, and welfare. That's pretty broad, right? I mean, that's where, again, trying to bring that comprehensive plan in with that site specific proposal, it's sometimes, it's not a clear linear path between all the health, safety, and welfare and that proposal. Of course, you don't want to degrade property values, so that's why you have, you know, specially used permits, design standards for some of those, you know, maybe uses that don't sit well right next to residential areas. So that's the tool of the ordinance, right? And then you balance that request against the status quo in terms of what's there right now, and what are the decisions that you've made previously with similar types of requests. And then back to those constitutional rights, due process equal protection, that sort of So the analysis of fact, right, so that's very important to both the legislative and the quasi judicial process. So you're considering these, interestingly enough, in the legislative rezoning, you don't really have to, you know, in the motion to approve or not approve the request, you don't have to bake in all these findings of fact. In the specially used permit, you need to include those findings of fact, and we'll walk through those in a second, just make sure we understand together what those are. But you're considering all that information, and so we'll talk through some of those. So we have talked through this, but again, it summarizes, you know, what's your task with in terms of forwarding on to the Board of County Commissioners. Bless you.
Thank you.
Planning Board comment is mandatory for all amendments, text amendments as well as a map amendment. Must be in writing, and then must talk about, and again, the staff helps out with this, right? Talks about plan consistency or inconsistency, and may, you know, your comments could include some other things, too. Obviously, you want to base that in some factual information, and again, get away from the opinion piece, like, I really like car washes, so I want more of them. Yeah, stay away from that.
Dollar channels.
All right, so let's talk a little bit about conditional zoning. Do you guys do many of many conditionals? So this is another, similar tool to specially used permit. It used to be called the conditional use district, but what they tried to do is call it conditional zoning and especially use, and get away from the use of the term conditional use. And I think in the earlier agenda, I had that old term in there, so I apologize for that. But the great thing about conditional zoning is that it is the legislative process. You can talk to the applicant outside of the hearing, gather information on your own as the decision maker, and do your own research. A lot of times, the ordinance will have the developer or the landowner put together a public meeting where some of the concerns around tree buffers, or setbacks, or parking, or transportation issues can kind of be aired and addressed, and then, you know, the developer can maybe incorporate those into a revised site plan. But typically, applicant will need to include with that neighborhood meeting minutes, what happened there, do some of the mailings themselves in terms of notice to the neighboring property owners. They'll need to include a specific site plan. The conditions are specific to that use. So if it's an auto repair shop, as you said, all right, we'll allow all these different businesses, except our auto repair shop's going to be a conditional zoning. So they go and they apply to the office for that. It's going to only be for the auto repair shop. So say they sell the auto repair shop, and the next landowner wants to do, you know, something else that's not allowed in the base district, it has to be a rezoning or another, maybe a different conditional zoning, you have to go back through the process. So that's one challenge versus a general rezoning that folks will have. But it, you know, setbacks and things should mirror the base district, but you may have aesthetics or operational things that are different with that conditional zoning. When was the last time you did a conditional zoning?
Last month.
Last month, okay.
For an auto shop.
For an auto shop? I didn't, oops.
Make it up.
I didn't talk to Marzie for this, about that example. Yeah, so you could do, you know, I think I mentioned design standards, time of use, that sort of thing, noise, operations. But again, you know, it's only for that specific use. Come up with a different use. You could have multiple conditions, right? So you could have maybe a couple of different uses in there. We're in the process of going through a rezoning for people that tried regional council, and our conditional zoning application had government offices and like a training center. So we've listed those two uses in the conditional zoning. So as long as we stay within those bounds, we're okay. But if we want to do something else, like, you know, open up a bowling alley or whatever, we would have to, we'd have to go back to the town and get a rezoning. And of course, they need to be authorized in the zoning ordinance, which you guys have. So I think I touched on the advantages here. It's, you know, one step process where specially used permit, you got to do the rezoning and then, and then the specially used permit. So can be a little bit simpler for the applicants that, outside the, the hearing, gathering of information is a huge advantage, and may help alleviate unnecessary concerns. That's always subjective, right, to the viewpoint. Now, again, I think I touched on these, so let me roll through those, and I think I talked about that. Let's take a pause and look at this what-if example. So think through this, I'll read it, but, you know, as a decision maker, what's the appropriate way to go with this? Your board, you as a board is considering a rezoning request. At the hearing, you become convinced that the proposed project would be harmful to the community and is a bad idea. A neighbor speaks at the hearing and states that, to that effect, that the property will reduce his property values, endanger his children. However, the proposal seems to meet all the goals in the comprehensive plan. Can the board properly recommend denial of this request? Does anybody want to take a whack at that?
Well, I always like to think that if the proposal meets all the goals of the comprehensive plan, the statute, and the UDO, there's not a legal reason to deny it.
Got it. Any other thoughts?
Unless he is qualified to make that, you know, unless he has some kind of qualifications that would allow him to speak expertly on property values and the safety for kids, then there's no.
No. What'd you guys, you guys huddled up, what'd you come up with?
It just seems eerily similar to some situations we've seen lately. Sometimes we get, we hear things that just don't fit. I remember we've had some cases with dog kennels, you know, that wanted to be in the middle of a residential neighborhood. I'm like, to me, it just didn't fit.
Mm-hmm.
And in those regards there, given this, if that were the situation here, I wouldn't feel a bit, I feel bad being opposed, although I'm usually one of the first ones to say, hit your property, you can do what you want with it, as long legally, you know? But sometimes things just don't fit.
Yeah.
Doesn't make sense.
Yeah, so you have that latitude, obviously the onus is on, oh, go ahead, Jeff, do you have another thought?
Well, I was going to say, you know, if, you know, as us being in different communities in the county, if that is in your community in your area, and you're listening to the people speak, and you look and, can that be a bad idea? Is that, you know, you understand where they're coming from, then you'd have to weigh in on, you know, I understand Paul's saying, is it fit the criteria? Is it everything there for it to go on? But also, there's got to be, to me, there's a human aspect of, is it a bad idea?
Yeah. You have the, I mean, you have the authority to go against the comprehensive, that's the interesting thing about this question, right? Maybe those were valid facts that were brought forth by that landowner, and you as a board, you have that latitude, you would have to explain why you're making your decision in conflict with a comprehensive plan, but you would have the authority to make that recommendation. And that's the really, this is the crux and the challenge you guys are always saddled with. You could weigh that, I mean, because property values and public health are key pieces of your decision, right? So if those are valid concerns, again, we don't know the details of this case, so it's kind of a weird one, it could go either way, but, I mean, this really sums up what you guys deal with every month, I think you got it, James.
The case that James brought up about the dog kennel, I remember it well. There was a legal reason to deny that, which the chairman at that time would not consider, to the best of my knowledge, I don't know why. It was a case where the person was accused of a code violation for having too many dogs in a dog kennel situation. And his claim was that either around the time that the UDO was just being introduced, or hadn't been introduced, that he was assured by some members of the Board of Commissioners that it was okay for him to have as many dogs as he wanted in the kennels.
Yeah.
Exceeding the minimum number that was going to be established. And I brought it up to the chairman that because that decision runs with the land and would be influencing the deed to the property, that under the statute of frauds, it had to be in writing. It couldn't be a verbal grandfathered in, so to speak. But the chairman allowed it.
Yeah, so, what was the other, oh, go ahead, Cindy, yeah.
I was going to say, too, I think this is a tool, the comprehensive plan is a tool that you use to make decisions, but there's a lot of things you have to look at, it's not just the comprehensive plan. Like I said before, if you get a list of things that can be put on a piece of property, and you go look at the property, and all the things that wouldn't work, you can see, but you look at it from the view of everything around it, you step back and take a bird's eye view, if this did happen, what's the worst thing that could happen, and how would it affect the community or the neighborhood? But although this is, you know, this is the plan, it's a tool, but I think you can surely, if it's the best thing to not go strictly and say, okay, you have to go by this, and it's the only thing you can use, because you have to, you have, again, put in the, you have a lot of tools to use, from the staff report, to the comprehensive plan, to the UDO, everything.
Yeah.
I think it's just one part of the tools in your box.
Yeah, I think that sums it up well, Cindy.
I think the other trick here is to be cautious that you don't intrude on the property rights of the owner.
Right. Yeah, I mean, it's a hard balance every month, so, I think I'm running slow on time, so I may need to speed up. So any last comments on that? I think this is, again, there's not a lot of context here, so, you know, you run into this a lot. So let me talk a little bit about the process side of running meetings, and then we'll jump into some quasi judicial decision making. Again, this is just kind of a cheat sheet for your preparation, so you can move quickly and be respectful of everybody, the public staff and others that are involved in your public meetings. You know, study those materials before meetings, if you need information, ask staff to provide that, or otherwise, get it on your own if it's not a quasi judicial hearing, starting and end meetings on time. That's sometimes hard to do the latter part of that, but, you know, at least you can start on time. I think the ending meetings on time can be challenging when you've got open-ended public hearing. You want to create those places for public input when you can. And then just, you know, it's okay to repeat yourself if you feel like it's not clear, you know, sometimes people, you know, are visual learners, auditory learners, so saying something twice in terms of, you know, the nature of the case, or things to keep in mind about, you know, your public comment or something like that. I think as chair, as board members, you can have some latitude in kind of reinforcing that, you know, talk about, you know, make sure you're focusing on facts and not hearsay or opinions, that sort of thing, and what you expect of the public, and then recap those decisions at the end. Of course, staff does help you with that as well in terms of taking the meeting minutes. So these are some just common issues for kind of conducting meetings. Again, keep an eye on that handout that covers the different types of decisions and that sort of thing. Conflict of interest, you as board members may have some conflict of interest that come up in terms of decisions that you have to hear, and so make sure you disclose those and recuse yourself when appropriate. And how do you handle those conflicts that will come up? And so it sounds like you have some good things going for that, but it's always good to just kind of reinforce that, have it written down in your procedures, that sort of thing. All right, I'm going to talk a little bit about specially used permits and quasi judicial decision making, right? So when was the last time you did specially used permit? Last month?
A couple months ago.
So that's when you sit as Board of Adjustment, very similar duties, except in this case, you guys are making, you know, final decisions, right, in a lot of cases. And so those duties are to hear and decide appeals from, and review any order requirement or decision or determination made by the Community Development Director, hear and decide applications for the approval of special uses requiring board approval, hear and decide applications for variances, hear and decide any other matters that may be required by the UDO, maybe there's other, you know, other committees or charges that'll be added later, make interpretations, and keep and prepare minutes of the board. So that's in your UDO on page 37, in terms of the power of duties when you're in, you know, making specially used permit decisions. But here's where it gets tough, and we've talked a little bit about this, you know, gathering evidence outside the hearing is very hard sometimes, because, you know, a small, well, it's not a small rural county, but, you know, if you're, if it's in your part of the county, you typically know the applicant and may run into them in the grocery store, or the gas station, or the post office, or something like that, and they may bring up, you know, the topic that's coming up in the board hearing, and you just need to kind of recuse yourself from that. If they send you a letter, or a phone call, say, you know, thanks for reaching out, but I really shouldn't thanks for reaching out, but I really shouldn't talk to you about this. So you, you really need to kind of be vigilant in terms of that. I know it feels kind of weird, but you guys are essentially judges in a, in a specialty use permit hearing. You're acting in that judicial fashion. You swear in those, those folks that are going to be talking for or against the app, for or against the specialty use permit. And then, you know, you have a lot of discretion in terms of how you consider that evidence, whether, you know, it's all opinion, so we're going to throw that out. So if Paul says, you know, we should, we should not consider that information because that sounds like hearsay or opinion. Let me see here. So let's talk a little bit about the, the findings of fact. And if you flip to page three of the, the guidance and procedures on conducting public hearings, down at the bottom, you'll see those findings of fact that need to be included in your consideration of that specialty use permit. So the use or development is located, designed and proposed to be operated in a manner that maintains and promotes public health, safety and welfare. So that's in, in consideration of the ordinance. The use or development complies with all required conditions and standards of the ordinance and with all other applicable regulations. That's the easiest one to find, right? Because they're going to be, you know, you've got a specialty use permit ordinance for the, the auto repair shop, so they're going to follow those standards. And they'll walk through those probably in their application. The use or development will be in harmony with the structures and uses in the area and conform to the adopted comprehensive plans for land use and development. And the use or development is located, designed and proposed to be operated so as to maintain or enhance the value of contiguous property or the use or development is a public necessity. So you need more auto shop repairs because there's nothing in that area. I've got to drive, you know, 30 minutes to go get my car fixed. We need one close by. So that, those are things that you need to consider for and against that application. So that can be pretty difficult, but those are the, those are the challenges and things you need to prepare for ahead of that specialty use hearing as you, as you look through the board packet and the information that's presented. Any questions or kind of pitfalls that you guys have run into as you've, if you've considered specialty use permits and, and run through this quasi judicial proceeding? That you want to talk about? So this just kind of summarizes on the next page, our next slide here, what I just talked about, but it is a method of land use regulation to address problematic uses by issuing additional standards. Maybe, you know, hours of operation because it could be very loud, you know, light, extra buffering, those sorts of things can be addressed in your specialty use permit. But do you do need to conform to the basic regulations of the district setbacks, that sort of thing? Okay, variances. How often do you hear variances?
We only do a couple of years.
Regularly enough? Not in a couple of years?
No, I'd say we usually have a couple.
Oh, a couple of year. Okay. Yeah. So now there's a recent change in variances with 160D that I'll talk about in, in a second in terms of the, I think there's four different areas to consider with, with variances. But again, it's a quasi judicial decision. So you've got to talk to the applicant during the hearing, get that information during the hearing. You know, Joe's a really good guy, so she'd approve the variance. You can tell me to sit down if I'm coming up to, to, to talk about that. Again, you need to be sworn in and you have that latitude on kind of the, the evidence piece. Is it factual or is it more opinion? Ian, let's see, I'm trying to think if I have the full, yeah, the full information on the, on page four of all these. This is a little bit of a, kind of a Cliff Notes version of the kind of four different tests. So the first test is unnecessary hardship will result from the strict application of the regulation. So one important thing is that, you know, no reasonable use can be made of the property unless they get a variance. So that's the first test. Maybe the hardship results from conditions that are peculiar to the property, location, size, topography. And then also you need to, this was the addition, is that you need to consider folks with disabilities. So if you've got, you know, a ramp out of the house or something like that, that may be in the setback area, you know, this would probably be a great example of approving that variance to accommodate, a reasonable accommodation for that disability. You want to make sure the hardship did not result from actions taken by the applicant or the property owner. So they can't, can't approve a variance if they've, if they've taken action that's going to create that hardship. And the variance is consistent with a spear purpose and intent of the ordinance such that public safety is secured and substantial justice is achieved. That's a hard one, but you guys are tasked with that as you, as you weigh the evidence for or against the variance. And the key thing here is that you, you know, you need a four fifths majority. So if, you know, Julie doesn't show up, it's pretty hard to approve the variance, right? Well, I guess in that case, or two of you, if Julie and Corey don't show up, it'd be, you know, almost impossible to approve the variance because you need four fifths to, to approve that. So quorum and, and full attendance is important. So I've got a couple of additional scenarios here that I want to run through before I jump into that. Any questions around, around variances? Okay. All right. So a landowner proposes a solar farm that follows the specialty use ordinance standards. And then family members, which actually were former owners, provide testimony about the agricultural benefits of not approving the solar farm. What do you guys do?
Chair should stop them or we can disregard what they're saying.
Yeah. So really what, what they're saying doesn't have much to do with the proposal of a specialty use permit.
Unless they have evidence in some scientific analysis that said, or from a Farm Bureau person or somebody that said, this is.
Good point.
Expert testimony.
Expert testimony? Yeah. Being, being a distant cousin, is that an expert?
My second removed.
Good. That was a pretty straightforward one. This one's a little bit of a trick question here. So a developer has requested a variance to construct a recreation oriented business near Ballooz Lake. And a number of citizens appear at the hearing to voice their support for the project. What do you do here?
I think he got the storage unit.
Yeah.
That was a conditional zoning. Not a variance. But it's similar scenario.
Isn't it, in this case, it's the same thing. Their support is not evident. Area, but it's not evident.
Yeah. Well, the other, this is a trick question because you can't do a use for a variance. So it's, it should be a rezoning. So in this case, I'll pick on staff. The staff is, you know, moved it forward as a variance and it's, it's a rezoning, actually.
The staff will.
Caught that question, right?
However, staff will make the caveat that we will not deny anyone their right to apply for what they want to apply for. We will advise them to apply for something else.
Not, something sort of related to this in Randolph County, where it was pushed forward as a variance. And it was for, I, I forget what use it was, but it was, it was like a use variance near the zoo. And so the applicant really wanted the, you know, it was like, we're doing the variance and we're going to push it through and it became really problematic and ended up costing a lot in attorney's time because the zoo, you know, we kind of appealed it and, and so it was just a lot of wasted effort. So this, you know, make sure, you know, pushing the right, the right thing forward. So, all right, got another example. Again, this is sort of a trick one. The applicant has appealed a determination by staff on setbacks of a proposed garage that's violating the side setback. How should the vote of the board be conducted?
Two twenty.
That was a variance.
Did the, did the property owner build it and then apply for the variance? Or was it already there?
Um, hasn't gotten built yet.
Well, you got to remember this scenario, they're, they're appealing, I said that they're too close to their setbacks and they can't have.
Oh, yeah. Haven't built it yet.
So they're appealing my decision to say they can't have their permit.
Right.
That's what this scenario is saying.
Adjustment. Yep. Yep.
If it's a hardship.
This is actually a variance and not an appeal of a determination because it's, it's a, they would need a variance on the setback. So there's no, you know, the determination is not, that would be a different scenario. So it's another trick one. Sorry, I threw another trick one in there. So it would be a four fifths vote that they would have to get to change the side setback for their proposed garage. So.
In that scenario, likely y'all would have caught it and said, like, you should probably do a variance rather than try to.
Yep.
That's what it says, that they, that they did tell them that they couldn't do that and they went ahead with it. Is that right?
Yeah. So it's not, it wouldn't be like a development, it wouldn't be a development, uh, regulation determination. Marzy would have to advise them like, you know, this is not a determination, you know, so you don't need to appeal this. You need to go in front of the board and present your case for variance. So, but it's a good example because I, I think, you know, you run into that where the general public doesn't really understand the process side of things sometimes. And so thankfully, you've got a good staff that can catch those, those sorts of things and, and guide the, the public in the, in the right direction. But sometimes, you know, people are pretty headstrong and want to do, you know, just get, bend around the axle. So. All right. That's, that's the last of my examples here. And I think we're pretty good on time here. Just a few minutes over, so apologize for that. But I wanted to point you to some additional resources as you go through, you know, your monthly duties as planning board members and conduct, conduct these hearings. So the North Carolina American Planning Association, N C A P A, they've got Plannings, Planner Citizen Training Program. They also have a lot more resources. So if you Google A P A N C, you can get some resources there. They have different webinars, different learning opportunities. It's mostly geared towards staff as well. But there may be some, some opportunities there for you as planning board members to get some training. The UNC School of Government, again, lots of great videos on 160D and, and different, um, learning opportunities there. A blog that is really interesting for particular things around, I don't know, like enforcing regulations in E T G A areas for the towns or something like that. Coats and Cannon's blog is really useful where you've got the, the professors and staff at the UNC School of Government that, that walk through different cases that either have been brought to court or been challenged or appealed. Some great examples there that I, I utilize quite a bit. P T R C at the Regional Council, we, we're real pleased to be able to come and present tonight's, tonight's program to you and happy to follow up. If you have any follow up questions for me, I've got my next slide, I'll share with you my email address and phone number. And then, of course, you've got your more experienced board member staff and your, a great U D O and plan, I think, to, to work from. So there's, there's a lot of resources out there for you to utilize in, in your day to day. And here's my information if you want to jot that down. I guess you've got it on your sheet there. So do reach out if you have any follow up questions or feel free to, to convey those through Lynn or Marzy and I'll be happy to get an answer to them. So. With that, I'll close and if there's any final comments by planning director or, or the chair or any questions from the board members, happy to answer this.
We'd like to thank you for your presentation. Very informative.
My pleasure. Yeah. Appreciate that. Good. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. You guys are doing yeoman's work.
We've already had the workshop, so we'll just delete it from the agenda. We'll just leave the agenda to wait it is. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to the October 9th, 2023 regularly scheduled meeting of the Rockingham County Planning Board, which I now call to order. Let the record show that a quorum is present to conduct the county's business. At this time, Chair calls upon Mr. Corey Scott for our invocation.
Let's pray.
We're grateful to gather in this planning board meeting. We are grateful for the opportunity to serve the community, the county and the citizens. And we pray for thy blessing upon these proceedings, that they might be civil, that they might be peaceful and that all may be heard and considered and that we might have the wisdom to balance the laws and the needs of the community in our decision making. And bless this proceeding, we pray, in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the September 11th, 2023 meeting. Been made and seconded to approve the minutes for the September 11th, 2023 meeting of the planning board. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. There's no opposition, so the minutes are approved. We've, the next item on the agenda is a workshop, which we've just completed. And next will be review of the procedures for legislative hearings. Zoning map changes reviewed by the planning board are legislative matters. These map changes are reviewed for reasonableness and consistency with North Carolina General Statute 160D, the county's 2021 land use plan and the Unified Development Ordinance, among other adopted plans. When making a decision, we consider recommendations of the planning staff and public comments. When applicable, this board reviews potential land uses requested by the applicant. Planning board decisions are forwarded to the Board of Commissioners as recommendations. The Board of Commissioners will hold a public meeting before making a final decision whether to approve or deny a zoning map change recommended by the planning board. A zoning map change is the first in a series of reviews and approvals that move a project forward. The Technical Review Committee reviews the site plans and technical items related, but not limited to later development approvals, including transportation concerns, environmental issues and county services. The T R C has comprised of professional staff and other agency members, such as the North Carolina Department of Transportation, county schools, emergency services and the North Carolina Division of Environmental Quality. Each case on our agenda will be presented by a member of staff. Following that presentation, the applicant for the case will be given an opportunity to provide the planning board with additional input. Anyone who has signed up to speak for or against this, at that application, will be given the opportunity to speak during a public comment period. After the public comment period closes, the applicant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal. After the board hears the rebuttal. After the, uh, board hears the rebuttal, board discussion, motions, and vote will take place. With that, we're going to call upon staff to introduce our rezoning request 2023-15. Oh, and before you, uh, approach the podium, Lynn, do you have the sign-up sheets? Is that what was on the floor?
That's what I'm having trouble keeping.
Down and dirty. Thank you.
And, uh, 15 is, I think, the second one.
Okay.
So. Back on here. Good evening, everyone. Um, I hope that was helpful. I always appreciate hearing updates and things like that from PTRC because they're very helpful for me also. There, the mouse didn't seem like it was going to work. Okay. Maybe everything will work now. We do have a request for rezoning, case 2023-15. It's specifically a request to rezone about a five-and-a-half acre parcel of land just outside of Reedsville from residential protected to residential agricultural. Uh, you can see the current tax pay and the address is 813 McCoy Road, Simpsonville Township. And this is a conventional, quote-unquote, straight rezoning. We received this request a little over a month ago. It's about 500 feet outside of the Reedsville ETJ and just a bit north of, um, Reedsville Lake and the McCoy Road Bridge. To give you an idea, there's the vicinity map. It's sandwiched right in between, uh, the town limits and the lake. I'll advance to the zoning map. I have two zoning maps. This one is sort of, uh, lower scale zoomed in, uh, to show you that the area pretty much is surrounded by residential zoning. There's a bunch of residential agricultural. We also have some residential protected. And we also have some of Reedsville's, what is essentially suburban zoning classes. This is zoomed out a little further just to reinforce again that this whole area is pretty much residential in nature. The land use plan designates this as the O2 land class. It's sort of in a, sort of in a boundary outside of Reedsville, but not close enough to a G1 land class to be considered in G1. One slide I did leave out of the packet, and I apologize, it's just for information, is that this parcel is in the Troublesome Creek watershed critical area. The only difference between protected and critical is that critical requires 80,000 square foot minimum lot sizes for single-family residential lots. Here's just a partial snapshot. As you can see overhead, it is currently occupied by one principal dwelling. As mentioned, it's located in the O2 land class, served by individual well-inseptic. The size of the tract exceeds the minimum necessary for the area and is typical for the area. It's neither particularly large nor small. Zoning change to residential agricultural is generally supported by the Rockingham Lake County Land Use Plan and Future Land Use Map in the O2 land class. Keep in mind, as a straight rezoning, all uses in the residential agricultural district will be allowed if approved. And generally, the residential uses nearby would not be in disharmony with the current, with the visions, excuse me, with the uses envisioned according to residential agricultural. I'll back up to the zoning map. It is bordered on, well, we'll say two-and-a-half sides by residential agricultural and bordered on another two corners by residential protected. I do apologize, I forgot the name of that small subdivision near there. But it's at the northern end of McCoy Road, right before you head into Reedsville. And then I'll go back to the parcel map. I essentially just summarized this for you. It's supported in the O2 land class, served by individual well-inseptic. There are no water and sewer services in this area. And housing variety is targeted as a major goal of the land use plan. Thus, um, when reviewing, reviewing objective criteria, staff feels this action, this rezoning action would be consistent and reasonable with the land use plan, future land use map, and other adopted plans. We recommend approval from RP to RA. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I noticed your, uh, last entry here, housing variety is targeted as a major goal of the land use plan. Does that, um, does that mean there's going to be additional units built on this property?
That is, uh, one of the things that has been discussed, yes. That would require subdivision. But, uh, different characteristics of homes that are allowed in RA is one of the reasons this request has come forward. I believe the applicant did sign in to speak on the speaker sheet, and we can get more information from the applicant.
Just one last technical question, though, that the applicant might not know. Since 80,000 square feet is required, is that per residence?
That is per lot, per residence, yes.
Okay.
Yep. If you had, um, I'm trying to think of an example. For just, just, if you had three townhomes, you would need three times 80,000 square feet, you would need 240,000 square feet each dedicated. The, a critical rezon, excuse me, a critical watershed is essentially the area of the water body that is the closest to the intake for the water supply for the jurisdiction that it serves. That's why it's designated as critical. And typically in critical areas, very large lot sizes are required, minimal impervious surface area. And some, some uses might be prohibited, like industrial or significant chemical manufacturing or something like that. But single-family residential is allowed in the critical area. It's just required, it's that each residential structure have a dedicated lot of at least 80,000 square feet, unless it would be something special, like a cluster subdivision, which in this case, it wouldn't apply.
Okay. Any other questions for, uh, staff? Corey?
So that in mind, you know, that they were planning to subdivide to get three lots of that space. It's five-and-a-half acres and it's got 1.8 acres.
Yeah. That, the most, the most, the most potential yield would be three lots. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Lynn, do you have any calls for or against?
We had three general inquiry calls. No one expressed particularly strong feelings either way. Just wanted a little more information when they got their postcards or noticed the sign.
Okay, thank you.
I'll back up to the parcel map.
Call upon the applicant. Would that be, uh, Mr. Easter?
Yeah.
If you would, sir, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ricky Easter. I live at 813 McCoy Road.
And what is it that you'd like the planning board to know? What is it that you would like the planning board to know?
Oh, uh, I have approximately, not quite six, six acres there. And, um, I wanted to move a home in my front part of my section for my daughter and my family to live in. I've been living there since, um, for 62 years so far. And I had stipulations also put on it where there would be no dogs, no alcohol, nor drugs, nor smoking to be done on this property that I would have a double wide put on, a nice double wide, may I add. And, uh, I thought maybe a double wide might be a, a problem. I wouldn't show them. So I went up and down the road and I found seven before I got out of set of limits. But, uh, as far as where my property is, if you kind of come out of my driveway and go to Flat Rock Road, it's exactly one mile and seven tenths to Flat Rock. If you come out of my driveway, it's exactly one mile and seven tenths before you get to Reedsville. So I reckon I'm right dead center. I am surrounded by, um, the Stires Derby, which I've been knowing ever since I've been breathing just about. And I had a lot of my, um, residents come to me and said they received this card. And I said, uh, for what? It's about the planning board thing. He says, do I have to go? I said, I really don't know, he said, what it's about. And, uh, man, my whole family, I mean, my whole, um, community was just tickled to death that I was getting my daughter put in my front yard to where I could have my entire family all the way back together again. And for, kind of being a little greedy, I remember I was getting old and I need somebody to take care of me too. And I've been living there a long time. It's a very good community. I haven't heard of no crime rate out there. And, um, all of my, my community in it and myself, we're like family. We, we've always have been. And I would appreciate if y'all were okay for this to go. So my family would have a place to live next to me. Thank you.
Hold on one second. Any questions for Mr. Easter?
I have one.
Cindy?
Mr. Easter, looking at this, um, photo that's on the screen.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I see your house is right there in the center. Is that right?
Approximately, yes.
Okay. If you go back in the woods back here, I see this. Is this a house back here as well? Or is it a shed? Or is it storage?
It used to be. It's removed. I took it there. There was no house there. It was like a, uh, a hobby shop I had there at one time and it unfortunately got destroyed by fire, so.
I'm talking about the building that's there, there now. If you can look at the photo.
Uh, it's my home, right dead center of the property. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, ma'am. You're fine, you're fine. Is it the one that's sort of most deeply buried in the woods? Towards the back here?
That one in the very back is nothing but a lumber shed. Walkie, pan, take lumber.
Okay.
Uh, just a piece of nothing.
Okay, and then over to the, if you're facing your house over to the right, what is that building?
Uh, over to the right?
Uh-huh.
That would be, my tractor shed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Oh, I'm sorry, Corey.
Is your intention to subdivide the?
Absolutely not. No, sir, I don't want to subdivide that.
Okay.
That's all. Hey. I think I'm living on a small place. Everybody says I got a big place. I said, no, I don't, man. If he ain't got over 20 acres, he ain't got that. But this is plenty enough for, for two dwellings and more, really. But, uh, it's my intention to have four generations of Easters living on my property. Ain't that something? I'm a great grandpa now. Thank you. Anything else?
No, sir. Thank you.
We have two speakers signed up. Daniel Leonard, are you here? Okay, and Daisy? You know, okay, okay. Then I'm going to open a public comment period for Mr. Leonard to speak. For the name, record, please state your name and address.
Daniel Leonard, and I put my address as the store's address, 1131 Freeway Drive. My current residence is in McLean'sville, North Carolina, 310 Myrna Road. My public comment is just to, to make sure that you guys know that we, everything he was just saying is truthful. We can subdivide if needed. He would rather not, obviously. Is that going to be a problem as far as putting two dwellings on the same piece of property?
Yes, per the ordinance, and I discussed that with the applicants in my office. I mean, they have to subdivide for this parcel.
So, and, and to your question as well, there will not be any additional subdivision? Just, it will most likely be just two lots.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Leonard?
So then, if the intent is it has to be at least 1.8 acres, is there enough space in the front for 1.8 acres to appropriately subdivide?
It would, yeah, I don't have a.
It's going to get to a surveyor to bring that to us for us to review. Um, we don't do that in-house. But there should be enough acreage there based on, uh, tax map, uh, estimates.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Public comment period is closed. Discussion. Seems like a pretty straightforward request to, uh, have a man reunite with his family on his, on his piece of property. I don't see that there should be a problem with this.
I'll make a motion. Yes, sir.
Okay.
A motion to recommend approval of this request to rezon the specified parcel to the requested zoning district based upon the consistency and reasonableness determination statements that are included in the board agenda packet submitted during the zoning presentation and as may be amended incorporated into the motion to be included in the minutes.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve this application. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. There's no opposition, so, Mr. Easter, your application is, uh, approved as far as us making a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners that your request be granted. Thank you. The next item on our, on our agenda is for a text amendment updating the planning board and Board of Adjustment, um, terms. This case number TA 2023-16. Mr. Marziano, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. The county attorney brought this to us and with us looking over a few things. The clerk's office found some discrepancies in the appointments of some members in the past. Some for two years, some for three years. Some people weren't reappointed to another term. So, uh, we figured out that the problem basically is the way this is written out. You can serve a third-year term with the possibility for two years, uh, two terms consecutive. Then you have to come off the board for two years. Then you may come back on the board for three years if you want. So their suggestion was, let's just give a three-year term and reappoint every term. So the language changes that we'll be making for that to happen, or proposed at least, is to remove the, board members shall serve a maximum of two consecutive terms with two-year waiting period, blah, blah, blah. That's just being removed, so there'd be a three-year term. And then the, where the, uh, alternates were written prior, it actually seems to be written that after a three-year term, if they don't join the board, they're not an alternate anymore. So we took out, the, just one three-year term and just did a three-year term. So they'll be reappointed to, if not appointed up, they could still be an alternate after three years. So what we're trying to do is streamline this, clarify this, and make it simpler because, like I said, my predecessor, um, signed a letter to the Board of Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners accepted it. It was in conflict with the bylaws at the time, but school government says it's rule. So some members had a two-year term, some members had a three-year term. We're just trying to make it all make sense. So this also stops the need for, let's say, volunteerism ever goes low. And we have people that want to stay on the board. And they're forced to come off in the current rules. This will allow us to be able to keep people if we can't find volunteers instead of just having someone wait until someone is willing to come on. So this basically puts us in line with what most other boards that I've ever experienced do.
Any questions for Mr. Marziano?
Yes.
I'm sorry, uh, because it's mirrored, the Board of Adjustment and the Planning Board, both sections are the same language, so both sections will be amended.
James?
Am I understanding right that once you're on this board, the commissioners could choose to just keep reappointing you and reappointing you? So basically, it's a non-ending, never-ending appointment?
They could do that. They could also choose after one term not to reappoint you. It's just, it's only one term. We're not doing the maximum two consecutive, all for two years and then another two consecutive. This is the recommendation.
Who requested this change?
Like I said, the county attorney brought me this change.
And somebody, who brought it to him?
I have no idea.
My question is why all of a sudden it seems like it's?
Well, like I said, we presented for the reappointments, or when Matt was coming off and the new appointments, that kind of thing. That's when Susan found discrepancies and everyone's, she went back to try and make a list of everybody's terms because she wasn't finding any consistent data between what Lynn and I found in our records versus what she had in her records. So what started this was us requesting reappointments.
I'm having a hard time with the continual appointment piece.
Okay. So what's your recommendation?
It almost seems like, I'm just stating that in appearance at this point, because a couple of folks have pointed this out to me as well, that it's almost like it's handpicked to a certain degree. Once you get somebody on there, it's more favorable to your quote-unquote line of thinking as opposed to somebody who might be a little more questionable in terms of, you know, kind of in lieu of the circumstances that we're going through right now. You know, as a planning board, we obviously had a recent decision that wasn't supported by the commissioners, which they've done that once or twice before. That's fine. But it seems like to me and to others, it could be considered a little bit of retaliation.
Well, I don't know from that, but I do know the section prior to this does say that you were chosen by the Board of Commissioners to serve it. So it's their choice to appoint people, it's their choice to unappoint people, it's their choice to amend these rules that they'd like to. We're bringing a recommendation that makes sense to me. Everywhere I've ever served, this is almost how it's ever been. You serve an appointment term of two years, five years, three years, what have you, and if you'd like to stay on and they'd like you to stay on, then you serve another. If you'd like to come off, this gives you, you know, without having to resign in the middle of a term, this gives you your chance to come off. There's nothing that says you have to have term limits. If you want to recommend back to them term limits, that's fine, too. The problem here is some people, like, again, it's just inconsistencies in our recordkeeping. We didn't reappoint certain people when we should have. I didn't know to do that because I read this at face value that you serve two consecutive three-year terms. Well, technically, yes, if you're reappointed for that second consecutive term. So there's some people that we didn't reappoint when we should have. There's other people that were only appointed for two years. There's some people that were, you know, we wanted appointed that we thought were appointed that didn't get appointed or something like that. There's, the charts don't match. So that's what brought this up. So public feeling and the way that perception is, I can't help that.
I understand it.
But that's not, as far as I understand, that's not the intent of this change. This change is to help us clarify the problems with our recordkeeping.
I understand we kind of got off cycle through COVID. I get it.
Yeah, that did happen, like the six-month extension or something, and that ruined some records.
We didn't meet for a while, then we did in some terms, if I remember correctly, some terms were up and some alternates filled in. And I know the recordkeeping part probably was a little bit, and that was before you. I understand that as well. The timing just is a little odd to me.
And I can understand that as you, as you explained that to me, but I can guarantee that's not what I've, I've understood this to be as this was brought to me. What was brought to me is we've got a problem with who's serving when and how long they're serving, and we need to clarify that.
It's just, for me, the perception is like we were kind of thrown out there as being non-informed board, you know, during a meeting, and that's not you, you know.
And I, and I understand your feeling of that. And in my perspective, though, I don't see that as this, that being this. That was months ago in my world. I mean, it, it feels like it's been a year by the number of phone calls, cases, and everything we've gone through since then. So I, I understand that, but from our perspective as staff, what we were given and what we've tried to clean up to is pretty much the same thing. We're just, we're tasked with making you a term, and it could be three years, it could be five years, it could be 10 years. We left it three years.
I want to be clear, I'm not dissatisfied with planning staff. You guys have been very helpful anytime we've needed anything. And the way that, I mean, in the few years that I've done this, you guys are more than professional. You know, I'm very happy with you guys, and I know there was some animus, perceived animus maybe towards, you know, how some might have felt. I'm not one of those. So, you know, the way that whole thing went down with the whole casino business, you know, there was some, there was some bad information that we didn't get, and my opinion is I don't think you all had all the information either. And that's what, we're tasked with making decisions off relevant information that we didn't have at the time, and I'll still stand by my vote on that one. But on this issue, I would like to add to that text amendment that new members would be, would have a need to have completed a Citizens Academy.
If y'all want, I will point out that we don't, we are finally starting Citizens Academy again, but they haven't done one in years. So I can't guarantee that it will be happening every year either. So we can, we can recommend it. I got no problem writing something like that in. I just can't guarantee that that's something that will.
That's all I'm asking.
Okay. And if the rest of everybody's fine with that, I'm cool with that.
We don't know when the Citizens Academy is going to meet. There might be a need for volunteers in an immediate term, and we're going to have to wait three months for a Citizens Academy to convene? No, I'm against that. I think that they should be, the way they are now, volunteers willing to come forward and serve the county.
That's what we are already.
Right. And to put that kind of, we already made another requirement that you have to be a member.
Of the county.
You have to be a resident of the county for a minimum of five years to further restrict people from coming on this board by having them be required to serve in the Citizens Academy. We're just encumbering the whole process.
That was a good addition, though, because that makes, that ensures that the folks that make your decisions for the county.
Well, we have had people who attended the Citizens Academy, who showed up for one or two meetings as an alternate and then just never showed up again. So to use the Citizens Academy as a qualifier is, I just don't think it's, it's more of an encumbrance than anything else. I would vote against that.
I think we should look for the next round of graduates from Citizens Academy and maybe.
That would be the commissioners.
Right, right.
Responsibility.
Right. I'm just, I'm just suggesting that would probably be a good way to make sure that they have a good feel for that leadership and understand how things are going on before they, but I don't, I don't know that that requirement because we don't, again, we don't know when the Citizens Academy is going to happen.
We're having one in the, in the spring, I believe, but I still don't have a month date that's been shared with me. I just know that they are trying to reinstall, reinitialize it. So I don't know how often or how frequently or its interval.
Before it started up, how long would it last? How long's the Citizens Ca? 12-week program? Daily or are you come once a week?
Weekly.
Weekly, once a week? For a few hours a week?
Good food, too.
I want to make sure I understand that it, so a new member would be appointed or by the commissioners because at the end of the day, we serve at the pleasure of the commissioners.
Right, and that's in actually Section 22.02 or 03, I forget.
Right. So they would be appointed for three years, and at the end of that three years, they could be reappointed. And as we have it now, at that point, they have to roll off. But with the new one, they could be reported, reappointed to infinity.
Right. They could.
So that's the part that I really, I'm not, I'm not saying that I don't like that, but there, there's a possibility that you could get a board that just rubber stamps everything that comes up here. And eventually, you would get one and you just keep rolling it over and rolling it over and rolling it over.
Well, and.
It would be hard to change.
Well, to address that, this three-year term would also address that because as boards change at the commissioner level, that would give them the ability, a new board would come in, and then when a member comes up that they didn't feel was doing their due diligence, that they could be removed at the end of that three-year term then, and they just wouldn't be reappointed. That, you, you serve at the leisure of the Board of Commissioners, but the Board of Commissioners is just as fluid as y'all are. So as times change, the, this will change, too. It's just like our ordinances, they're fluid. They change as the times change. So the fact that, I understand what you're saying, but it's built into the election process at the Board of Commissioners level that would actually stop something like that, in my opinion. I've worked in places where I had a board member, we gave a retirement plaque for serving 30 years on the planning board. She was just that great, that impartial, she did so much for the community. I've had others not last two years in the same community. And it's just, you know, for me, if, if you get someone that wants this work and is passionate about this work, that's great. If you get someone who's not impassioned about it, but like you're saying, is rubber stamping, well, and all of a sudden, they're, they're locked into six years, this gives us the option to get rid of that person that's just rubber stamping, too. So to meet your concerns, I think this gives us the option for leeway for both directions of that, to keep the people who are, you know, genuinely interested in supporting the community and to weed out the ones who rubber stamp. I'm not saying that's what this is doing, but this gives us that ability as opposed to locking us into six years. The way we were reading the current ordinance, that's why we didn't think any reappointments had to automatically occur. We thought the clerk was handling those, and they weren't, but that's because they thought we were handling those. So you see, the, the way we read it, two consecutive three-year terms, that's a six-year term. And that's how we were interpreting this. And that's not the way it was intended to be interpreted. So they want to remove it to just one term. I mean, you can still put in here a recommendation that, you know, no more than three terms could be served. This is still up to y'all to make a recommendation if that's how you feel about it, and we'll, and we'll push that forward. I've got no qualms with that one either. But like I said, I have been in a community where without that person's leadership for 30 years, it, it may not have had a volunteer board for 10 of those 30 years. So you never know what's going to be around the next door. I mean, the Board of Commissioners, the next time around, we're not locking the next board into basically contracts with board members down at this level by, by limiting, by not limiting terms, well, I'm not saying by not limiting, by limiting to having to reappoint every three years. And that's what this is getting at, is having to be reappointed every three years so that we clean up our records. There won't be any mistakes from that point forward. There won't be one person serving three, one person serving two. There won't be this person didn't get reappointed and they've been on for five. You know, there's won't be, you know, Julie leaves tomorrow and someone fills her seat for the next year or however long her term remains, and then we forget to reappoint them for their actual first three-year term. You know, under these rules, we may think that is their, that's their first term even though they're filling in the, the gap of someone else's second term. This is just to clean up the recordkeeping. I don't, I know it just sounds like a broken record, but that's, I mean, we have a headache downstairs trying to figure this out for a week, what, four weeks ago? It was just baffling.
Is there a vehicle to remove a member in the middle of a term? Is there?
Not that's actually written into our ordinances, other than that you serve at the leisure of the board. That's in the section prior.
The board could say you could have a year, and they say we don't want you to come back.
Yeah, but I don't know if that would happen unless it was something like majorly gross misconduct of some sort. I, I think you still have the, the protection of you're on a three-year term, that's your term. But I'm not the county attorney. I don't know if I can answer the remainder full of that, but I'm saying nothing's written in here that says, based on gross misconduct, you shall be removed, X, blah, 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 blah. We have our bylaws that talk about, you know, absentee removals. And you're supposed to, you know, you're sworn in, you're swearing to follow the laws or blah, blah, blah. I think if it's brought to our attention that you're not, you could be removed on actual legal grounds, but nothing built into this particular terms section.
But at the end of the day, we, we serve at the pleasure of the commissioners.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's not just this board, by the way. That's.
Yeah, right. Understood. I understand.
Engage in a lot of speculation. We're being asked to make a change to the way the appointments are made, remade or unmade, and that's it. To speculate that there's other intentions behind this, we're just wasting time. Any other questions?
I have a motion.
Well, no, we have to open the public comment period because we have a speaker that's requested time to speak. So with that, Mr. Marziano, thank you. Public comment period is open. Mr. Isley. For the record, please state your name and address.
Doug Isley, 1790 Flat Rock Road, Reed'sville, North Carolina, 27320. First of all, Mr. Fink, you took all my questions, but I'll come up with something different here. I have the same question for the board, and I will direct that to the attorney. Are you attorney staff by chance?
There's no attorney here tonight.
No attorney here tonight. Noted. No attorney. I can't say your last name. How do you say it?
Sedowitz.
Sedowitz. Mr. Sedowitz, you just made a statement. Let's not engage in speculation. Speculation is called questions. People need to ask questions. This casino fiasco?
We're not going to the casino.
I'm not going to the casino. This what's, this is what started all this. I, I want to ask the board, and I want it on record, on camera, who made the request? I know the attorney did, but I want to know who is the driving force behind the attorney because there's been questions about the governing body that told this board to change the UDO back in June. One said it was the board, the board. The other said it was the leadership. Then I got an email from the county attorney saying he did it. Well, who's in charge? It's a, it's a flipping show here. You got to have objective members on this board, not submissive members. Ms. Hayworth made a good comment a little bit ago, and she was questioning, you work at the pleasure of the board and the pleasure of the board members. But if those board members, and I can speculate, y'all might not can, but I can because I'm a citizen. I served on this board for three years, so I know what it's like to make hard decisions and make good decisions that's going to affect 91,500 residents in Rockingham County. Marzio, I think you said this has been like this for a while. I'm curious as to why nobody's called it before. Maybe we need to look at getting a new attorney if he hadn't called this beforehand. The Citizens Academy is something I came out of. It's something we had on a recurring basis, and it was good, and it got great members. And we had people come on the board on a regular basis. I served on this board, like I said, for quite some time, and it was a pleasure to do so, and I learned so much from the Citizens Academy. So I think as the county commissioners are probably listening or will be listening or will get notified that I talk tonight, you need the Citizens Academy, you need to educate the community. That way, you can get people, get involved. And this, this mess about changing, no. That information that was up there, we need to have those terms in there. That's, that's there for a reason. It's worked in the past. Thank you.
Public comment period is closed. At this time, Marzio, did you have something there?
Nope.
Okay.
I'm just.
I just saw you go there.
Oh, no. Just back here until you tell me when you're, what you want to do.
I believe at this time, we'll entertain a motion. The motion would be to recommend to the commissioners that they change, go ahead and change the language in the Section 22.04 terms.
If I may, real quick, we have to have a motion one way or the other. It's not going to be like this happened in July. We have to have a motion to approve or a motion to deny recommendation. So I don't care which way it goes, I have to have a motion to take to the board.
I move that we approve the text amendment.
With no changes, is that what you're saying?
Very well, then.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion. Make a motion for denial of this request to amend the UDO as presented, as may have been modified by the board, and find the amendments to be inconsistent with the county's current land use plan.
Second. Motion is made and seconded to deny this request to change the terms in the Section 22-04. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand.
I think Ms. Hayworth wants discussion.
I was wondering if I could, if I could make a substitute motion.
I don't know.
Well...
Friendly amendment to...
You can amend it. The motion has already been made and seconded. If Mr. Fink cares to amend his motion, based on what you want to say...
Are you looking to amend my denial, or are you looking to amend Paul's approval?
It's more of a substitute motion to add terms, to add three terms.
Do either motion? I mean, I'm confused now. His motion to deny the request, or to rewrite the request?
If you're prepared to make an approval with amendments, I will withdraw my denial.
Yeah, that's what I would like to do.
Mr. Chair, I withdraw my denial.
Okay, the motion to deny has been withdrawn. Cindy, got the floor.
I would like to make a motion that we accept the changes, but add that, instead of recurring indefinitely, that a member can serve three, three-year terms at the most.
A maximum of three-year terms?
Maximum of three.
Three terms, nine years.
That's correct.
So where we put that, instead of where it's been struck, you would like to have that language rewritten to a maximum of three years, or three terms may be served by an individual member? Is that the language you'd like to have in there?
Correct.
Or something to that effect?
Correct.
Lynn, can you write?
Three years, or three session, or three terms, or is that...
I think so.
Second of terms, just what you...
Yes, yes. Because the commissioners could still remove them if they didn't renew it after three years. We're just adding that there's a limit to the number of times they can be reappointed.
Right, I'm just trying to make sure we get the language that y'all are looking for, or you're looking for.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, motion has been made.
I'll second.
Now I forgot what I was going to say. A motion has been made to recommend to the commissioners that reappointments of three consecutive three-year terms be incorporated into this change.
I still second it.
Motion has now been seconded. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, on a vote of five to one, the motion carries, and a recommendation, accordingly, will be made to the commissioners. And now, I guess, we have new business commissioner-board appointments. Didn't we just do that?
No, this would actually be swearing in the ones that are standing here.
Is the gentleman here?
Mr. Haley is on vacation, but Mr. Moore is here that could be sworn in for his next term.
Okay. Where's Mr. Moore?
Dylan.
Mr. Moore. All right. Yes. Dylan, if you will approach the podium, please. And place your left hand on the Bible, and raise your right hand. After I say the word "I," you will say your name. I...
Dylan Moore.
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support and maintain...
That I will support and maintain...
...the Constitution and laws of the United States.
Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
As a member of the Rockingham County Planning Board...
As a member of the Rockingham County Planning Board.
And Board of Adjustment.
And Board of Adjustment.
And that I will not allow any actions...
And I will not allow any actions.
...as a member of these boards...
As a member of these boards.
...be influenced by personal or political friendships...
...to be influenced by personal or political friendships.
...or obligations, so help me God.
Or obligations, so help me God.
There you go. You are now duly sworn. Next item agenda is adjournment. A motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I thought we were doing the, we talked about doing board reorganization tonight, too? Was it that tonight?
No.
That got put on hold again?
We put that in hold, we addressed that in the email out to y'all, that with this discrepancy in terms of reappointments, that until we got this amendment made, I don't know if the clerks want to have everybody start new terms. I don't know what the arrangement is. So we're waiting, we're waiting until that night's figured out, to make sure that some of those discrepancies are cleaned up. Plus, I didn't think it was appropriate with Mr. Haley to be in absent, since he's been appointed to the board board.
He was added, he could not make it tonight. He had a pre-planned vacation from some time back. His appointment came after his vacation was made, and so he's on vacation. That's why he could not make it tonight.
Another appointed board member, is that what you're saying? We have another one coming?
Yes. Mr. Quint Haley has been appointed as a board member and will be sworn in at the November meeting.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to adjourn.
Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like, sign. There's no opposition, so the meeting is adjourned.